Public in court. We have on the agenda consideration of Daisy Bronson Middle School name change. There are a couple of people here, who do you want to go first? Mr. Al Green.
I think Congress was a hard one. My word is safe.
Several weeks ago, a request was made concerning information about Miss Daisy Bronson, after whom the middle school was named. While researching, it was found that Miss Bronson was born in 1873 and became a teacher in 1901. She dedicated her life to education, foregoing marriage and children. Her extracurricular activities were mainly doing anything that was needed by the school for the students. Miss Bronson retired from teaching in 1951 after a career in education that spanned 50 years. The Daisy Bronson Junior High Wing was named after her in 1963. Shortly after the research request was made, a newspaper article was published in the Calabrian Record about a movement to rename the Daisy Bronson Middle School after Pierre Lafitte. The article focused on Mr. Lafitte's exemplary career at Littleton High School. There is no question that he is worthy of being honored. The question here is, does the town want to erase the only legacy of Daisy Bronson in order to honor Mr. Lafitte? Looking at how the town handled honoring people in the past, we see that the Daisy Bronson name was transferred from the junior high wing to the middle school, and thus retaining the honor to Daisy Bronson. In a second instance, when the UJ Galleen Wing was demolished, the name was transferred through the new wing. The precedents set in these two instances affirm that town sincerely in bestowing lasting honor to those who serve. For this reason, our community needs to think very carefully how we would like to honor people for their service. How honored would this school be to have a gymnasium named after a man like Pierre Lafitte, who put his heart and soul into the U of Littleton?
May I speak? Hi, everybody. Good point, Dick. A gymnasium after Mr. Lafitte would not be worthy. He was a teacher, a mentor. He touched the lives of several of our school board members' families and some of the people here. He was an exemplary teacher, human being, and a family member, who gave countless hours of his free time as well as his educational time. And we all know this, we, anybody who knew Pierre, there is, I can feel the political tide in here already. Things change. If I was a donor of $5 million to build a new school, and my only stipulation was, I'd like to name it after myself, would you refuse the money? If you can say yes to that, if you can say yes to that, then maybe we shouldn't name the junior high school after Mr. Lafitte, who donated far more than $5 million to this community in his time and his influence on so many people, young and old. And things, as I said, things changed. Mrs. Bronson was a wonderful lady, I'm sure, but are we going to keep that name forever and ever and ever? Someday, we're going to change it. If we ever build a new Lakeway Elementary School, and we happen to have a donor, which would be wonderful. We're not going to name it after Mrs. Lakeway if somebody throws you a check for five or 10 million bucks, which I wish they would. If I had that kind of money, I certainly would. And I'd want you to name it after my mother, who went to school here. And that would be my only stipulation. And I'll bet, I'll bet nobody would say no. But we're honoring a man who gave more than just money. He absolutely gave his life, right up until the year he got sick. He was still working here at Littleton High School and Daisy Bronson Middle School, right up until the day he got sick, past the day he got sick. And I think he deserves this honor. This is the modern time. He was an exemplary teacher, a master teacher, and they're few and far between in this building. And I think we should think hard, and I think we should change and make that name of our middle school to the Pierre Lafitte Middle School, not a gymnasium, but the middle school. Thank you.
Mr. Al Green, I'm actually rather shocked at your presentation, really. Daisy Bronson is not relevant. I have talked to numerous people. Nobody knew who Daisy Bronson was until I presented to the school board the excerpt from the history book. Those opposed to not dedicating this school to Pierre Lafitte basically oppose change. And if we're trying to move our school forward, we need to see some changes made. Mr. Lafitte impacted the lives of many, many people that are present in Littleton today. I haven't had one person that was impacted by Daisy Bronson, let alone even knew who she was. So I consider that a moot point. And honestly, if the school board doesn't consider this as a valid dedication, then I think the school board is not in favor of moving ahead in favor of change.
Oh, and don't forget, if I may, nothing against Daisy Bronson, God rest her soul. Her time has come and passed, but Pierre was also a successful junior high school basketball coach. And he was an extremely successful varsity girls' basketball coach. Three consecutive state championships in the 80s, three. The first one to do it from this school, Mr. Bartholomew did do it some years later, but Pierre led the way. Not many people can say that. Certainly Mrs. Bronson can. And again, nothing against Daisy Bronson, but we're living in the present, not the past. We went from Daisy Bronson, that was attached to Littleton High School when I was a senior year, then it went over to the middle school, it was Daisy Bronson again. So we bonded Mrs. Bronson several times by keeping the name. And we temporarily named the new middle school, which we could have easily named for somebody else at the time, not Pierre. The only regret that I have is, we always name something after somebody who has passed away, and not when they're here to really feel the impact of what this community thinks of that individual. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Person Wicket, members of the Royal Prince School Board. I do have papers, and I'll just leave them right here. My name is Susan Mooney Random. I'm a retired educator who has served as a guidance counselor at the Rochester Middle School, assistant principal at Spalding High School in Rochester, and lastly, at the New Hampshire Department of Education, working in drop out prevention and alternative education. And Daisy Bronson was my great aunt. My roots go deep in Littleton. I was born in Littleton. My parents were Kathleen Bunny Bronson and William Bill Mooney. My paternal grandparents were Trevor and Kitty Mooney. My maternal grandparents were Phil and Hazel Bronson. Phil Bronson was Daisy's brother, with whom she lived after she lost her house when 93 was constructed. She retired at 70 in the year that I was born, gotta give it away, 1950. But I was 24 at the time of her death, and in that span, I got to know her, not only as a child, but as a young adult. Great Aunt Daisy was very special as I grew up. I dearly loved her and know that she influenced my own decision to get into the field of education. But I'm not here to speak tonight about Daisy Bronson as my great aunt, but as an educator. I would like to read some excerpts from issues of the Littleton Courier that will illustrate her timelessness and relevance in education today. There was an article written in the Littleton Courier in 1936. It was at the completion of her 34th year of teaching. Of course, she went on to teach many more years. And some important excerpts from that article include: "From her start in the Littleton School, she taught 6th grade and later 8th grade, where she remained for many years. In a general revision of the high school setup, she now teaches for the 7th and 8th grade, riveting instruction, particularly in math and science." I have to say at this point, wow, math and science, two of the STEM classes, two of the things that we're really pushing for, and here's a woman in 1936, teaching math and science. What a role model for young ladies. The article goes on to say that "Miss Bronson does not consider her long tenure at one desk remarkable and is reticently discussing it as such. She still has to study just as much in the day when she was a tenderfoot in the teaching world, keeping up with the many changes that occur all the time. 'I would have lost my job long ago if I had stopped studying,' she admitted. This continues to be a quality that we seem to have in all of our teachers today." This last one is from the Courier, an article about the dedication ceremony that occurred simultaneously at the Lakeway and the Bronson School, same day. Participating in that programs that dedicated the schools remains, you might recall, some of you, Leslie S. Cummings, superintendent, school board chair, attorney Lawrence Gardner, Robert L. Topping, former chairman of the school board, Mrs. Bradley Cooper, Charles Melnick, and Dr. Richard Hill were the members of the board. Miss Bronson said at the dedication, "This has been a very happy day in my life. The school board, parents, and some of your grandparents have done me a great honor. I will follow the use of these splendid facilities with intense interest." Mr. Topping recalled events that led up to the school department approving the school board's recommendation that the two schools be named in honor of the beloved former teachers. He said that a noted New York jurist, Judge Jonas Goldstein, had once stressed at a talk locally the importance of honoring our school teachers. Mrs. Lakeway and Miss Bronson exemplified the best in the teaching professions, said Mr. Topping. School board chair, attorney Lawrence Gardner, said at the dedication of the Daisy Al Bronson and the Mildred C. Lakeway Schools. I ask you to remember only two things today. First, we, the people of Littleton, name these schools for wonderful teachers and wonderful persons. Second, we, the people of Littleton, name these schools for teachers because we recognize, perhaps at long last, the vital role of the teacher in our society. Through this change in names, we also recognize all of the wonderful teachers in the past, in the present, and in the future. That was the school boards and parents many years ago. Daisy is an enduring role model for the community, teachers, and most importantly, the students. The naming of the school was to be a last tribute to all educators and teachers.
Anybody else?
My name is Carol Lucas, and I'm a resident here in Littleton. I came here today for the, what people talk about, the renaming of the building. I went through the entire school system here in Littleton. I started my school over at what was called the Catholic School, like, many years ago. You could maybe vouch for you on that. That used to be the, they called that the Catholic School, right?
Say it wrong.
And then I went, say it wrong, yes. And then I went down to Lakeway, came up here to the Daisy Bronson, when the wing was basically behind us here, and we were the first class in 8th grade, and we moved back to that building, and then we came back from high school again. We bounced all around. What I want to say is, no disrespect to anybody that supports naming it Pierre Lafitte, or no disrespect to the Lafittes themselves. I'm a traditionalist, and we name these schools after people that, yes, did walk our community back then, but because I'm a traditionalist, I feel the names should stay the same and continue to honor those people, even if for generations removed. And I do think that there's other ways to honor Pierre or many other great teachers that have come through this school system. I had Pierre, except in 8th grade in high school, one of my favorite teachers. I just think there's other ways to honor him and his legacy, because he certainly has a legacy at this school. Thank you.
One more thing, Dan. Not to cast any doubt on your great aunt's teaching achievements, but Pierre Lafitte taught four subjects at this school in his lifetime. He taught science, taught social studies, he taught math, and he also taught psychology. That's a lot to ask of one human being, but he did it, and he did it well. As a matter of fact, his psychology courses in classes had waiting lists. That's how popular he was. He didn't go out and recruit the kids. The kids wanted him because he was a teacher. And like your great aunt, at her time, in her life, I'm sure she was a wonderful teacher. School boards change. I know, I sat over there a few years ago. Some of the things that I voted on have changed now. School boards change, so we change the things we do. And traditionalists, if you live by tradition, you're going to die by tradition. You've got to move on with the times. If you don't move on with the times, you become stale and you fail. I've been in business all my life, and we've had to make changes all the time to stay competitive, to stay in business. I'm a traditionalist too when it comes to family and friends and Pierre Lafitte, because it's time that we made a change. And I'll go back to my point. If somebody walked in with a $5 million check right now, we could call this Donald Trump University if he was the one that was bringing the money here. And I hope he doesn't, because I don't want to politicize. However, that $5 million check will give me almost any name I want. And if the board did not take it, the taxpayers of Littleton would be very upset. They would be more than happy to name the building after somebody for $5 million if that's the only stipulation. But the point is, it's time to change. It's time to honor new people. And Mrs. Bronson will never, will never fade away from the memories of this area, as far as the school. But it's time for a new name. It's time for a new dedication. It's time to reward somebody new for the good that they did. Otherwise, nobody is ever going to get recognized again in the years to come, because after 50 years, most of us won't, most of the people coming through, if we're all still here, they won't remember Pierre Lafitte. And there'll be a group just like us here wanting to rename the school for somebody else. And hopefully, we will all come together and say, yeah, maybe it's time. Maybe it's time. Right now, I think it's time. I think we owe that to Pierre, and we owe it to what he has done for our community, our kids, and a lot of our lives, mine included. We were friends for 45 years. This is really not a big issue, as far as I'm concerned. This is an issue of doing the right thing. And I would hope that nobody is taking this wrong on the Bronson side. This is nothing against Daisy Bronson. We're in the now. We want to move forward. And I think naming that school after Pierre would be a major step forward. After all, youth and government just named an award after him. Statewide award for his contributions to youth and government for many, many years. They recognized what he did. It wasn't politicized. Nobody went after that award. They came to the family with that award. And that's the way you want an award to be. We're coming to you because we want to acknowledge that Pierre Lafitte was more than just a teacher. He was Daisy Bronson Middle School. He was the kingpin in that school. He was the leader of that school in his own way. He led by example, not by pointing his fingers. And I think it's time we honored that individual.
I appreciate everything that you shared with us about your Aunt Daisy Bronson, but again, the relevancy, there's a relevancy factor that's missing. Pierre Lafitte followed in your aunt's footsteps and did as much as Daisy Bronson did for those students who were educated by him over the last 40-plus years. And they live in this community, and they know Pierre Lafitte, who impacted all of our lives. I also want to make the point that the new wing of the high school is a new wing. It's not the old Daisy Bronson, which used to be behind us. And the Daisy Bronson name is still on the St. Rose Building, so she is still being recognized. Again, it's all about relevancy. I mean, if we don't, if we don't stay current and honor people who have affected the lives of us that are alive today versus those that are dead, I believe anybody that had Daisy Bronson in junior high school would probably have to be close to the age of eight. And I haven't had, and why isn't anybody here talking about how Daisy Bronson affected their lives? I mean, Nancy, did Pierre Lafitte affect your life?
Absolutely.
And I've had hundreds of people Facebooking us about the support and how he personally affected their life, and I respect that.
Thank you. I'm really going. Just wanted to say that I've had some people call me, and I think other people, other partners have had people call them, so we'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Can I just say something? And I look at this, we were very honored, but I look at it as an advancement of, in recognizing Pierre, the students of this school will remember they had him, and it might bring back some spirit that has left our building. And when I was approached about this, I looked at it from that perspective, that maybe the students will realize that if you do what's right, eventually you will be recognized. Nothing against Daisy Bronson, I mean, but I just, I think it is a time to change, and maybe this change might help bring people within the building together, and the students will know because they do know, they know of him.
Thank you.
Dan?
Could I offer a compromise? You know, we've heard both sides. Why not just add Pierre's name onto the Daisy Bronson Pierre Lafitte Middle School? Call it both. Add another name, and then you're honoring both people, and it would work.
My name, Mike, you said, I was fortunate enough to coach softball last year, Pierre's last time with the school, and he was the athletic director at the time, and was very proud to have the team still going. And even when he was sick, he continued on, because that was all he concerned himself with. He didn't let anybody know that he was ill. Even at the end of the season, I got it out of him when I heard wind that he might be ill, and he didn't want anybody to know. Very proud man. My son went through this school and was affected by Pierre Lafitte's teachings, and I miss, nothing against Miss Bronson, but she's had 50 years of being recognized. I think it's time for Pierre's 50 years to come, starting now, and I hope that the board chooses to rename the school to Pierre Lafitte Middle School.
Thank you.
It's not a, it's just a question. Is there a deadline associated with the decision?
Not yet. We're letting it as soon as possible.
I'd like to move on to a quick little minutes for the April 3rd, school board's meeting. Do you have a motion?
To move.
Do you have a second? Any errors, corrections, or omissions?
My name was not listed as present.
Oh, yes. Okay. On the April 3rd. All favor of these corrected amendments?
All right. Motion carries.
Motion to approve the people tent, school board work session.
To move.
Do you have a second? Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you have a manifest? Your party, your representative.
Sorry. The treasurer did have an opportunity to give a report today. Most significant item, on the year-to-date basis, we did receive the final IFCA installment. It stands at $3475,600. The estimate that we had involved revised revenue. There were no adjustments needed, and it was possible.
Do you have any questions? Oh, no. And as much as the president also, you have a trial here down as a receipt. Is that the amount of money you receive from?
For tuition.
For tuition students.
For the leavies.
For the leavies. Okay. Thank you. Any questions regarding treasurer's report? Next on the agenda. Make up days and change our school calendar.
As I reported at the last couple of meetings, our calculations show that the hours required by the state of New Hampshire for each of the schools, specifically elementary school, we will, assuming we don't lose any more days. We're projected to accumulate 1,012 hours, the requirement's 945. Middle school, the projection is 1152, the requirement's 990. High school, the projected hours are 1,094, the requirement's 990. Given that, and feedback from parents and other constituents, I'm recommending that we keep the end of school year for students as it is on the calendar currently, i.e. they're not making up those orders.
Do the teachers feel like they'll still be able to cover some of this?
Yes.
Not any?
Yep, I haven't got any feedback from teachers. I've asked principals and their staff on that. Yeah, I think, I think they feel like confident that they'll be able to cover. Good question.
So the last day of school is 14th of July.
As scheduled.
As scheduled.
I mean, as it is on the first day.
I'm all set with that. As it works. Yeah. I'm all in.
Teachers, professionals, will do some, a little more work with that, but again, we will look at some different ways to make up that time. we're looking at some different ways to make up that time and put back a recommendation.
Other than the end of the year?
That could be the next. I think we need to talk to the, we need to talk to teachers about that, the parents, administrative staff, a little bit. The easiest way is to do it day for day, because that's probably what we'll do. But also, we also need to think about what we need to accomplish those days and how they can be best used. I think certainly following that conversation is important.
Where's drivers' education?
I have a, I sent you all a Google Doc that outlined, I think, the essentials of that program. We talked, this is a program we talked about for some time. As now we've gotten to the point where, as per the direction of the board some time ago, several board meetings ago, to go ahead and advertise a position, develop the job description, which I have, develop the parameters of the program, which I have sent to you. We need to do a couple of things. We need to formally consider approval of the program, subject to, again, the parameters that I shared with you and this job description. And then, secondly, consider the applications that we have at this point for instructor to approve.
So the people that, the applications, you say you have applications, have they seen this job description?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was with the, it was advert, the school spring advertisement had elements of this job description. It's not exactly as what's here.
Okay.
But I think that, yeah, but the essential elements that are contained here are on the school spring. So it's a little bit, there's a bit of a combination here of things that, and instruct, we want an instructor in terms of, we expect with classroom teachers, but obviously there's some things that are very unique to this particular program.
Okay, I have some questions that I sent out to Tom.
Yep.
Earlier today. So if you'd love to read my answers, read the answers he sent to me, we could be helpful.
It was a question of coverage within our department policies. As a pool, even adding a vehicle, a new vehicle would be covered. We already had rates established for next year, so there wouldn't be any change in the fiscal seventeen, eighteen period. And even beyond that would be part of our overall loss calculations. So nothing specifically for adding a vehicle for the program. As a general ed program, it would be considered a regular school activity, covered by our regular liability. So it would be part of our blanket, one million dollar per incident, per occurrence coverage. Any vehicles or anything would be included, and as a law property loss, be subject to a thousand dollar deductible. In the past, you had driver's education as a pass-through element, where the state was contributing, I believe it was a hundred and fifty dollars per student. You recognized the state revenue at that point and had a professional services line to show the expenditure. In this case, we'd be treating it as a general education program, so we would have to add, salary would be part of the 1,100, 110 lines, just like regular education salaries. FICA would be part of the regular education, FICA. There would be no other benefits involved. And create several supply lines, tech book lines, that type of thing to support the program within the general ed. Your appropriations are already fixed for them for this year and for the next fiscal year, so any budget as well that would be allocated to that program would be from other areas that are already budgeted and appropriated.
So it's a transfer of funds to that line?
It would be a transfer of funds to those lines.
Okay. I ask something about scholarships, if that is mentioned.
There has been some mention of scholarships previously. Essentially, what would happen is, rather than a scholarship, unless there's a scholarship from an outside source, it would simply be not collecting tuition from those students that are being scholarships.
So was there criteria built up for questions, scholarship, like income guidelines, or how was that gonna work?
I have my own.
Yeah, but the scholar, the scholarship was a suggestion, and it was put into the document that we shared with all of you, something that we talked about a bit in the past. It wasn't part of the original recommendation, but I think it's certainly part of what we can talk about. If there's provision for that, if it's an external scholarship, if it's, obviously if we go internal, then that changes the bottom line. And the bottom line, as appropriate, as a structure, as I presented to you, with the scholarship beside is, covers expenses, revenue expenses even. And I think that's something that frankly, scholarship piece, I think would be something we would want to, if we want to pursue that, would be after we hire the instructor. For that kind of conversation, we could have a instructor as well. I wouldn't connect to a scholarship approach at this point.
So we make sure that we don't include the scholarship in this original or initial?
Boy, maybe that's, in that's the document that you have on, this is the job description. If you look at the document you have in Google Docs that I shared with you, that's the one that has the parameters. I ask, again, I ask for a board input into that report. I think, again, I think that was a good, I think that was a suggestion that I think would come as a part of, once, if the program is approved as it is without the scholarship, it would figure out the structural piece of it as something we could, would be considered. However, that would potentially move it from a self-sustaining program to one that's not, totally. I should've made, should've made a hard copy of that, of that document, since I just did. I've got it hard trying to find it myself, but I will, I will.
Yeah, so this basically just recorded conversation at the moment.
Yeah, I think we could, the driver's education, I've got the documents here. I'm gonna send them off to you. Yeah, I think we can make that note, that that may be something we'll consider at a later point, but we're not approving that as of this moment, if that's your wish.
And we have the classroom that we can provide?
Yes.
Provide supervision of the support for instructors needed and required. Who's the mentor?
The supervision will need, will need to come through the administrative office, administration of the high school. And that will be required by, by the way, they'll require the, provide instructional supervision of the present teacher. And that will be similar to what we do already. Okay, I'm sharing this, I'm sending this link to you again. This is the document that has the parameters.
Steve?
Yeah, great, good, sir.
Yes. I show on that, it's a course, a price of $650. And I've done a little bit of research while we're here talking. I found that most of our own, InterLakes is charging 650, Plymouth is charging 680. I wasn't able to find many more than that that we had listed quickly, but I did have somebody approach me today at the hospital, whose child is interested in registering, and they were saying that they reached out to several places, the price was 475. I don't know if that's accurate, if that's what it was when the state was offering eight in that age and out on, but maybe Mike knows, do you know what some of these?
There's only one place that I know of that's offering at 475, and that's in Lancaster. The other place that's in Lancaster is either at 900 or 930. Everybody else is in the 650 and up. That 600 is the average statewide a year ago, and that's not up from there, so.
I didn't ask for details, but she made it sound like every school she called was 475.
My understanding, my understanding is that's the only one. Woodsville is 630 currently. Plymouth is in the 650, 680 range.
She's saying according to the website.
Yep. But I believe that's the only one.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I didn't have an answer for her when she approached me to cafeteria, and so it's kind of like, well, we're gonna be talking about it tonight, I'm sure. Okay. And Steve, or, have they started registration for that already? This parent told me that the kids are being signed up today.
I knew that was gonna happen, but I asked Joe to do a survey, or to get some, gain some interest in it. And make sure, because the board has not approved anything, the board is meeting tonight, only the board can approve driver's ed. However, I think the recent question you asked, and I want to be able to provide some responses, having to pay a formal outreach to students to see how many students are interested. Now, students who say they're interested, I want driver's ed versus parents who are willing to write the check, there may be a disconnect there, but the initial response, and this is just with one little outreach for 70 students. So that would be, that would be to conduct a driver's ed to start curriculum, get the school year, first of May, pay the work the state gets back. I talked to Joe extensively about this, the students would not lose class time, they would lose some of their advisory time. In order to do this, it would be a time, we would minimize disruption to the rest of schedule, but I said before, that was, I'm certainly, I really would like to see the students have the opportunity to start this, if we can yet this school year, but I don't want to set the program up for that year with our teachers. I want to be very mindful of the teachers and not pulling kids out of classes, because you, you know, this time, this time of year, as it approaches, they get very worried about getting everything done. So I think we're okay there. It's not all gonna happen during school, right? This will be only a part of the whole program, part of mostly after school.
Isn't it, they're struck by age, they only, they start at certain age?
Within three months of their 16th birthday.
So that should be double check.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we usually have that.
And these projected dates from cohorts?
Yeah.
Here that you gave us?
Yeah.
You got spring, May 1st, June 23rd, and then you got summer, June 19th, so.
There's some overlap, there could be some overlap because of enrollment and recruitment and so on. Yeah, there's a little bit. These are approximately projected, give you a sense. Yeah, I mean, this, going to give them back the scholarship, something we can come back later, which would be a set of enrollments and other things.
Will there be a syllabus that goes up with this? The reason why is I'm looking at student parent responsibility, how they talk to attend to all classes, all required classes and driving activities. But I know that when my kids went through driver's ed, there was a couple of days they were allowed to miss one or two classes without jeopardizing their position in the class.
Yeah.
I don't know if that needs to either be added here or that should be part of the syllabus.
Would that provide that?
Yeah. Well, this is, I mean, this isn't.
Yeah, I didn't know this, while I was researching the program, there's actually a $50 fine in some of this.
So I don't know if, maybe things have changed, it's been a few years since my kid went through it, but I just didn't know if we need to either have that in this document or at least in a syllabus. So it's clear.
Yeah.
Are we looking to approve this thing?
Yes, I'm asking for that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, is he recommending it?
I did, but if it's in all required classes and driving activities, we'll pay an extra fee to make the time, if appropriate. I don't want it just to morph into, yeah, I'm willing to pay, so accommodate the schedule, that's not a concern there.
I'd like to make a motion then, that we can forward and approve the basic job description for the driver's ed program. We forward this starting program, since we could give our best statement.
I have a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. I might just add, Patty, that if there's some action items that need to be done, like we could include in an I-alex in the minutes, whoever has to deal. I guess the next item on the agenda is the LHS gymnasium roof load capacity evaluation.
We have a document in the folder from Tyree. I was really hoping we could avoid this, I'm still gonna try. The original thought was this, that we would add insulation, and obviously the existing roof, if you add insulation to existing roof structure, you need to make sure that the roof will be able to hold on any of the ways insulation before forming the snow that you're gonna have. The proposal, as we put it out at this point, is not required, is not requested additional insulation. However, visiting with the Gibraltar, and I think Thomas had some feedback from a couple of contractors, and this one contractor, they're looking for that initial engineering study on existing roof structure, capacity, weight-bearing load, so, fair way to put it?
Asbestos evaluation.
And an asbestos evaluation, which is not here, but that's a given, that's a requirement. So, yeah, so it's, it's, you know, it's an expensive, around 10,000, then that's just, that's just to study the roof, existing structure, determine the weight-bearing load of that structure. Then, of course, in this proposal by Jeff, Tyree, which is a year old, and he said he would honor it, still honor it. Then, then an additional study, we choose to upgrade the roof, that is a structure that, as we say, goes back and it shows that if it's not sufficient to hole insulation or hole additional snow, then there'd have to be another study done to determine what would need to be done to reinforce the roof. I'm still hoping we can get by without doing either.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the scope of services, it's the evaluation design phase, and going to the third page, that looks like that fee is about a total of $9,290. But the scope of services indicated in the construction phase, that looks like it's 1375. And the scope of services in the structural upgrade, that's mine, your gym room, is another $9,000.
Yeah.
So those three total figures are around $20,000.
Yeah, exactly. It's about, it's a round number, it's about 10, nine to 10 to do the initial study, say this is what the capacity is, and then it would be another eight to 9,000 to design, or do an engineering design to say, this is what you need to do to the roof to bring it up to capacity. So, yeah, there's two there. The initial saying, this is what it is, and then, and then. So, yeah, there's two there, the initial saying this is what it is, and then, and then if it's not sufficient, then another one that would involve doing the engineering work for the upgrade to make the roof, the structure stronger to support insulation and additional snow, snow load.
So, we're not, we're not gonna even entertain adding new insulation, losing the point. And I don't think that's, I don't think the savings of adding insulation is gonna take to this.
No, that's where I am, I've seen the numbers and it's, if you look, if you look at all the costs, that is still what it's upset.
For a number of years it won't take for itself, maybe ten years. So if you go through all this for the sake of adding three inches of insulation, my personal opinion, it's a waste of money. If we're just replacing the roof with existing insulation that, that damaged, if we're talking about adding another three inches of insulation for all this, the savings, we may not see for ten years.
The other question is, and this may be something that doesn't happen, we could do some more communication with potential bidders, is are they comfortable bidding? And taking their chance of the structure there that is sufficient for what they're putting on, you know, a lot of what they're putting on is in the conveyor. And what's there, or doesn't, for whatever reason, impede the melting of snow, any more than what's there, then it shouldn't be a problem. I was trying to save us some money here. That's why we didn't jump right into this initially. But I wanted to bring this, I wanted to bring this to you, make you aware that, you know, we're, we're, we're working on this, and we'll work with our, our contractors, work with George Broder as well, who did the original R and P. I just wanted, and we, we talked some night before, several, pardon, excuse me, about some additional costs that may be associated with this in terms of engineering study. But I want you to see the study, I want you to see it black or white, see the number, so you know exactly what we're talking about potentially.
So do we need to make a decision on adding insulation before we go forward with this?
I, I don't think so, not at this point. I mean, unless you directly say, and we could, we could do some more checking into feasibility and that of the safety. I know this, I know this is not, the current trend, this is bucking the current trend a little bit, but.
So my question is, there's, there's like three different things here, so what are we?
I mean, I'm not asking for any action, you know, I, I just wanna make sure you have the information. I've alluded to these studies, and I wanna make sure you had the studies in front of you, that explain what it's about, before we do anything.
So when will you do that?
Well, I, obviously, if you give it, if you did acceptance piece, then we may or may not have to take some action.
Well, we've got an R and P up here that says, we will turn it down.
Yeah.
At that point, we don't know.
Yeah. We'll see what, see what our, see what our contractor, the successful contractor says about that piece of it. Hopefully they'll say no, that the existing structure is sufficient. You don't need to spend money, I don't want to spend money, we don't have to. I'm just trying to be careful there. I also don't wanna put a new roof on the group, don't wanna put a new roof on a structure that can't hold it, that wouldn't be good either, so.
So, first report.
The, as, as, as requested, the principal and directors submitted a written report. We, we, we asked that they, I asked, I supported them to not do the oral report today because of the potential length of the meeting. So, they're, they're here, but I told them not to worry about actually speaking today.
I just wanted to ask.
Unless there's questions, yeah?
Mr. Prior, put his report here. I noticed you looked down some recommended replacements, and there's one, two, three, four titles, two of them crossed out.
The top two are, are, are critical in my opinion, that we need to act on over the summer at the latest. The bottom two would kind of coincide with the tech plan, which is the third thing on my, about adding money, which we've done for future years to, to catch up, because there was a lack of a plan in place.
So we don't, you don't need to vote on more than two?
No, no, that, that was presented at a, at a previous, probably, I believe it was in February that I presented those figures to you.
Okay, thank you. So, that being said, I don't have any other questions for the principal, anyone else? Mr. Patty, second stem?
Huh?
I just wanted to check my principal's stem here.
Awesome, yeah, if there's a rename going on. The after-school stem? Yeah, it's very popular.
Oh, Patty, oh, never mind, you're right. Okay, um, there have been no personnel meetings, right? No facilities meetings? No policy meetings? Briefly today, I did do up a monitoring matrix, which still, for seventeen eighteen, which still needs a little work on it. So I'd like you to review this. If you've got any other information, would you send me an email? Steve, I'd like you to review with your administrative team, because there, there's months and days that we have to do. Committee assignments for facilities, I'm recommending Jim Ennis and Greg Cook. We also suggest that we ask Leslie Robbins to be a committee member with facilities. LTA negotiations will be myself and Jim Ennis. Wilton support staff negotiations will be Millie Nelson and Greg Cook. Personality will be Millie Nelson and Kim Wilson. And policy will be Kim Wilson and myself. So those are the committee assignments for this year. And I would like to ask Dr. Nylas to set up meetings with town officials, Mr. Dorsett, Ms. Noice, and Mr. Sweet, who is the chairman of the Slough Woods, and Dr. Nylas, Tom Mangles, and myself, with an ultimate in the gym, if I can do that. To have meetings with those people in mid-May, mid-August, mid-September, prior to the vote of the DRA for taxes, and sometime in early January. So you can set those up. I would suggest that you meet at the SAU office, if we have to meet at town office, you know.
And that's gonna will meet the, the recommendation that was on the board, correct?
Does it need, no, we wanted us to meet month, but that's, annoying, not.
No, right, I know that, but this is, this is certainly much more than we've done.
Well, yes it can, yes it is. So communications need to be brought back and forth, through and fro, so hopefully this will accomplish this, and I would not like to meet without an agenda, so we'll have to discuss the agenda. Without a what you're trying to. I do not want to meet without an agenda, I want an agenda, because I don't want to meet just immediately, so. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, sorry, I want some acknowledgement, so as we, we heard a little bit earlier, it was on my list to acknowledge that Pierre Lopee. He was honored Fri- Friday, April seventh, in Colquhoun by the naming of the state leadership award, named after him for the state of New Hampshire Youth and Government Program. So that was mentioned a little bit earlier, and I certainly wanted to acknowledge that as a great honor, coming from students, teachers, and the state, who certainly come in with a hiring yard. Rebecca Huxell is moving on to further competition for the Rotary Speech Competition. These are, these are, this is a couple of things that I gleaned from principals, specifically these from Joanne. Acknowledging her and wishing her well as she moves forward in the, in the competition. Vivid, who was just here a bit ago, we should have covered that one too, but Vivid Ane was named Northern Care Administrative Assistant of the Year, sponsored by the NASASP and Horace Mann, so I want to recognize Vivid and congratulate her for, for her honor. And I hope that, again, I'm gonna try to get through this the best that I can, my voice isn't the best with my cold, but it sounds like I'm talking through my nose, and probably, I probably am a little bit. Some events, I want to recognize literacy day, April eighth, and specifically thank Jennifer, who did all the, or a lot of the organizing, I know she has some help, probably some others she can recognize, but I was, I guess I was most impressed with that, by, by the participation of businesses and organizations who came and gave it their time to be here at the, at the, in the, in the middle school area, high school area. And the kids who came in and saw the various exhibits, and the animals and the whatever, you know. It was, it was just an amazing, wonderful, active event, and I was really, really pleased and happy to see that event, be able to bring around a little bit. Who else do we have there?
Connie Ward, Connie Ward did a lot of that. Whitney, Anel, Chris Vars, who's an art teacher.
Yeah.
National Honor Society, where our volunteers, Ms. Anvil. And other student volunteers who work with the community service hours. But a lot of the businesses, they keep coming back, year, not businesses, workshops keep coming back year after year.
Yeah.
And donors who donated over seven, eight hundred dollars worth of money for books. I think we gave out probably twelve hundred this year. We had a great ADK, the woman teacher sorority who did a book swap table, more than seven hundred books spread across, and they were all gone by the end of their term. So it was awesome. We're thinking about having an adult swap, and, and it's not, it's not a Wilton High School, but it's Grant State Reading Council, so I do this work for them.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
That's all.
The Career Fair, we did that last week, thirty-seven of the original forty-one exhibitors came. That, that was originally scheduled on a day that we ended up calling off school. It was one of those days of the forecast, the, the weather had been hit right on the nose, and we knew that we were going to, when we woke up that day, the pavement was gonna be dry. And by about noon, one o'clock, we were gonna be wishing, wondering what, how we're gonna get all seven hundred kids home. And it's pretty how that day turned out, it wasn't great, I know. But that didn't mean necessarily, we, we scheduled the Career Fair, which we did, and again, that's very happy, but again, the tremendous, again, I gotta, I gotta, hand it to the community, surrounding communities as well, that those that participated, much appreciated. You know, to your better thanks, thank you for being a part of that. Update, principal applications, middle school, high school, principal applications, we've received seven applications so far. There's still some time left in that process for applications. Another event I wanted to recognize, Union, Union Bank Relay for Life Spelling, I want to congratulate Crystal and her team for the big win, and also want to thank Dale and his team for making my team look good. No, actually, he may, he may, Dale's team.
We actually, we actually.
I will not let you know.
For the record, we won.
Witness all this.
For the record, we were first the first time.
We thought we won it for a while. Actually, the important thing was, it was a great event, the school was really well represented and well behaved, right Billy?
Absolutely.
There we go. We had a good time, a lot of fun, and it was for a great cause, and I think it was very successful. But it was good to see the community there with that, but also the large numbers of, of, of our, of our employees there helping with that. The other thing I wanted to report, as part of, share as part of my report, superintendent goals, and Anne, I talked about this a little bit. This, this, this may not be, it may not be normal for, for this to be discussed, and it's not about the discussion, but that's okay. I, I think it's good, I think it's good, I'm, I'm speaking to the public here, and to the board as well, but those, several here, but those also who, who will be looking at this in Channel Two, and I think it's, it's, it's good that people know what's expected, what the board's vision, as well as my understanding of some things that are important. So there's four goals, and I'll, I'll read them quickly here. Goal number one, through an alignment of pre-K through twelfth grade curriculums, improve student achievement in reading, and integrate student achievement into the annual report. So, if one thing left off, it should be math, I haven't read it, unless you're what happened with math, I'll definitely have to math and reading. You know, I think that's, again, as we move forward, some of the work we've already started doing with curriculum advisory, capital at the building level, certainly, certainly the curriculum alignment will receive a fair amount of attention. Assess all class sizes, student teacher ratios, evaluate, this is goal two. Evaluate professional staff to determine if resources are being utilized effectively. Certainly something to do for the budget process, the ongoing planning process. It's not always the most enjoyable process to go through, particularly when you're developing a budget based on that, but that's something we have been working on. Develop an educational plan for the district that includes evaluation of all facilities to ensure the educational plan can be achieved. This should include the plans for the elementary school. So that, we've had many conversations, formal, informal, you know, as part of delivery sessions, budget sessions. You know, I'm fully aware, we need to engage the community, we need to, we need to look at our facilities, particularly likewise, as that was mentioned. Figure out, figure out ways to, to address that, but at the same time, as I've said repeatedly, and I'll say it again, we have to pay attention to the taxes that we're asking people to pay, because certainly the town supports the overall education program very strong. I think as evidenced by the most recent election. And, and we need to, again, work together, work with the, with the town taxpayers, businesses, teachers, community people, to make this happen. And then number four, prepare SAU office procedures manual for the hiring evaluation retention of personnel. And one thing I did share with the board was a, a flow chart that we developed. I developed, administrators helped me with that. Last year, the details, the process we go through from the very beginning of the creation of a position open, opening or creation of positions self, all the way through. It is, it's a fairly long and a detailed process, as you, if you look at the steps, but we'll continue to work on that, but also with the hiring, evaluation, retention, and we're also working on trying to put some, a lot of energy into the development of the job descriptions, which is part of that. So that's something, again, that, you know, my office, working with the administrative team, will continue to work on developing that particular goal as well. So those are the four goals. And, you know, it's good to, it's good to have the, that direction, and certainly, certainly, I'll do my very best to attain an acceptable level or better on the future.
Any squads to a couple of his, or particularly one of the goals? We did have a site advisory committee headed by Jim Ennis last year to propose some sites for the board. They've come down to three sites, I think the board needs to make a decision on one of those sites this year. We also need to, I bet they're tired about, we need to release the site advisory committee, this, you know, another thing. And, uh, if we opt to buy some money in at one of these sites, then we're gonna have to have a lawyer, I think, to help us out. And who knows with that, uh, warrant, so just to catch you up on my thoughts. So, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into a non-public session.
Make, I'll make a motion in terms of non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA, number A, called three. Have the right to know law four, number two, hiring of any person who is a public employee. Number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than number four. Speaking with us the superintendent.
I think that's all for, for this session. We know, I know, we need to cut your committee numbers, okay, it's all been said, called. North, second, it gets home late.
On the table, call go.
And, and, I always forget that, it's sort of a given, but I, I apologize. I do, I do forget about.